Hi. Good evening and welcome to the third and final meeting this evening. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beech Grove. And at this time, we'll call to order the common council meeting. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each council member to introduce themselves, beginning to my left.
Dave Mobley, City Councilman, Large.
John Jennings, District Four.
Dave Harrison, District Five.
Dan McMillan, Court of Treasur.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Anthony Davidson, District Three.
Mary Hughes or Stewart, District One.
Kathy Coats, at large.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Council members, the minutes of the previous meeting have been presented for review. This time, the floor is open for questions or comments.
I have read and understood the minutes. I didn't find anything in there I needed to change. I motion, we accept the minutes as written.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, we have two specials presentations, and I'll ask Councilman Jennings if he'll come down here with me. And tonight, we want to recognize Evan Smiley. Evan's here with his parents. Evan, can you folks come up, please? For the members of the council and the general public, Evan is a sophomore at Beech Grove High School and qualified for the state finals in wrestling, which just took place over the last, I think, last weekend. Evan was one of sixteen finalists in the weight class of 126 pounds. He lost his first match, which is, you don't lose when you get to that, when you get to the state finals, and the state champion beat him. And, but anyway, I want to recognize Evan tonight because of the outstanding accomplishment that, that he did. It's very hard to reach the state finals, and as far as I'm concerned, he's a champion, and we'll continue to recognize these young wrestlers, and, and we only hope that Evan comes back next year in his junior year and senior year. So Evan, on behalf of the council and the city, congratulations on your accomplishment, and we're awful proud of you.
Thank you.
Do you want to say anything to anybody?
No.
All right.
Thanks.
All right, thank you very much, and at this time, we'll turn the floor over to Judge Wells. Judge?
Thank you, Mayor, and city councilors, for entertaining me this eve, this afternoon, or this afternoon, this evening. It's been a long day. Basically, I wanted to just touch base with you again. It's been, I think, six, seven months, maybe a little longer, since I was last here. A lot of things have changed. We've got some new numbers. So in front of you, you should all have one. Everyone has one of these, right? And then I have extra copies, if anybody from the crowd would like to take one home. What we have is, on the first page, is a breakdown of the monthly gross revenues, the dispersments to the different entities required by Indiana statute, and then payments, also by Indiana statute, and then the final column is the net revenues to the City of Beech Grove. And how this breaks down is every, every cent from a case filed in the Beech Grove City Court is controlled by Indiana statute in some way, shape, or form. So this is basically a monthly breakdown of the statutes in action, sending the monies to where they need to go. And if you start over on the left-hand side, you'll see how much total monies are brought in, broken down by month, and that total for the year was just under $280,000. Now, and then you move, as you move along from left to right, you'll see a dispersment for the City of Beech Grove. That would be the combination of court costs, which is in every case filed in the Beech Grove City Court, no matter what it is, has $19.50 that stay in Beech Grove. So that's in that dispersment. And then additional to that is any local ordinance fines. So if you have a case filed in the Beech Grove City Court on a local speeding ordinance, for example, you're going to have $19.50 for the court costs, and then another $39.50 for the fine. That's what makes up that. Then you have, the next line is court costs that go to county funds. So that's the Marion County, and that's controlled by statute. They tinker with that every year, and that's what we send out on a monthly basis. State of Indiana has us send their court costs only every six months. The reason there's a third dispersment in there, in that April amount, is when we changed computer systems, they required us to start fresh with a zero balance, so we sent out everything we had in April, and then May was the regularly scheduled six-month dispersment. So that's why it's only six grand. And then you move down, November is that second time that we pay them. So you go from December to the following May, and then May to the following November on the state dispersments. Then, if you move over to the City of Southport dispersment, that's any local fines that are on a Southport ticket. So if you have, like I gave you the example, the Beech Grove ticket that had that $39.50 for a speeding fine in Beech Grove, that $39.50 or what have you, whatever it is with the corresponding Southport ordinance, that's that dollar amount. Then, the next column, that have the two columns together, those are for deferrals. So if, if a person gets a speeding ticket written on a state code, and they do a deferral of that, they pay a higher amount of money, and they don't get any tickets on their, on their license. If it's on a state code, that money has to go to Marion County. That doesn't stay here. If it's on a local, if it's on a local ordinance, a Beech Grove ordinance, it stays in Beech Grove. So that would be way back in the farther left-hand column. And then City of Southport has their own deferral program as well. So that's those monies. So as you can see, I mean, you can look at the Southport one, they're only, they only have a couple of deferrals a month, because that, that's only a couple hundred dollars there. And then, once you take all of that away, you then get with the, the net to the city. So that's a breakdown of how that operates. Any questions on, on the monetary there? Yes?
I just wonder, because I know how we pay out every six months, but those are the months that our revenue are high as well. How does that work out that way? Like, April revenue? Is that a cumulative number?
Well, April revenue is, is interesting, because it is, usually, a lot of cases get paid because of tax returns. So that number, that Mar, Mar, that year's March isn't that high, but usually, what we see, are seeing this year again, is, is March, and I expect April to be much higher. And then, yes, what, we don't, the, the way, and Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the, the, the way the state monies works is it's kind of sits for six months, and then it gets, in an account, and then it gets pushed out, and then that's when, for my purposes and our recording, is when you see it. So that's why you see a higher number there in March, or, excuse me, in April and November. And April is usually one of the higher months, simply because people will come in and pay old, they've been suspended for a long time, they've got an extra, extra money, and they're paying it. So that's, so that's a breakdown of last year's. Now, this year will be a little different, because we'll have Southport on for the whole year, and then Speedway will come in, starting, let's see, they'll start, they start filing now, we probably won't see anything for another month or two, money-wise, so then you're going to have six to eight months of Speedway on next year. So, so this gives a good idea of kind of a base. I would expect next year to be different. The next page is a breakdown of the, the number of cases filed by law enforcement entity. So you've got Beech Grove Police Department, Indiana State Police, Southport, and then some officer in Lawrence, I don't know if he accidentally filed in our court or what, but he filed in our court, and so we've got the one lone miscellaneous seatbelt ticket. He filed it, two days later, the person paid it, so it was in and out. This new computer system lets us track who's filing what and how often, so we can see a breakdown monthly. So it's something I like to keep track, just so I know where the cases are coming from, how I can track the flow, and see who's, who's using the court more than who's not, you know, just, I think it's, it's good to know. And then the last packet is a breakdown of the last six months, and you can see what types of cases are filed in the court. And this is a breakdown of every case on every local ordinance or state infraction for both the State of Indiana, Beech Grove, and Southport, and that's all, all broken down there. Everywhere from a false alarm to tobacco-smoking use and runaway dogs and everything like that. So that's all on there. We have the la, over the last six months, we've done a lot of work. I know Cindy and Craig have ironed out all the issues with our deferral programs. So all the deferral programs have been cleaned up, and the information sheets that go out with tickets, so when you get a ticket, you get an information sheet about the court, tells you how to pay, what your options are. Those have all been revamped, Craig and I, and Cindy put ours together and got everything worked out on that. So now, every, every single option that a defendant has in our court, they get that on the information sheet, so they can either pay it, admit it, deny it, get the deferral, they've got everything, they don't need anything else. They've got it all right there. And then it also refers them to the website, which has everything on there, and then it also gives them the phone number for the court or the city attorney. So anything anybody would ever need is now given to them when they get a ticket. Well, you can argue whether or not they need a ticket, but, so those are some of the things. The computer system's up and running well. We, it, like I said, it gives, it lets me track everything that goes on. It saves us from a lot of accounting nightmares. You can't submit things or accept things or move monies without it being according to how State Board of Council wants it. So it saves us a lot of headaches in that fashion. Other than that, things are going great. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Yeah?
What happened to the state police? Did they quit coming to court here?
Yeah, the, the state police started filing last summer, and overwhelmingly so. I guess the Marion County Prosecutor's Office was unaware of their filings. They, I, I didn't know he was unaware. I figured if the person he represents is filing in our court, he would know about it, because his signature goes on the ticket, but that's neither here nor there. So he decided that it was inappropriate for them to file here, and that he would keep it at Court 13, but most of those police officers that write there are now writing in other counties, so they just don't write in Marion County at all, since they can't come here. So I think in the future, those will come back at some point, but right now, the prosecutor has decided that Court 13 is the better option for what little of those tickets he has left. Judge, I got, I got a question. I got this sheet here, the 1266, and it says, "Agency Totals." Now, is that Beech Grove Police, or is that our, or what number is our compliance officer? The, that 1266 number is everything filed by Beech Grove, the City of Beech Grove, and I would say 1,240 of that is Beech Grove Police Department, and then the remainder, two dozen maybe, would be the Animal Control Officer, Steve Durbin. If, another, there's no other entity or individual filing besides Steve Durbin and the Police Department, so... So there's no compliance officer writing for any of our city code violations? Not that I am aware of. I've not seen anybody else.
I think those, there's not, but I think those would go through environmental court anyway.
It could be going through environmental court. I'd, I'd argue that most, a lot of those would be easily, easily handled in our court, and be a lot quicker, and expedited remedy if they were going through our court, and cheaper for everyone, too. But that's not my decision. One other thing I did want to say, last, I guess I have two, two final things. The last time I was up here discussing the, the inter-local agreements, Counselor Bell, and I wish he was here tonight, because I wanted to chat with him, he asked, he said, "Do you expect the, the inter-local agreement with Speedway to cure the financial issues," and I'm paraphrasing, "the financial issues with the court, and bring it into the, to the black?" And, and while I, I expect that the volume from Speedway would probably assist in the financial soundness of the court, that, those, the, the financial revenue brought in for the City of Beech Grove from the court is not up to me. I can't control what tickets are written in my court, who writes them, how frequently they're written, what cases are brought to me. I can't control that. I have to work with what, what filings I have. And I do my best to trim the budget down, but it can only go so low, because we have one staff person, myself, we have a computer system. I, I've switched computer systems, so that'd be cheaper, saved us a few thousand dollars. But any, you know, revenues are controlled by the enforcement that the city puts forward. So I, you know, I just felt like I should correct that when he asked me that question. And I appreciate the question, I understand where he's coming from, but at the same time, that's not my, I, I, you know, I can't tell the officers, "Hey, go out there and write more of this," or "Go do that," or "File more tickets so we can get more revenue." I, it's not in an ethically appropriate position for the judge to be in. So as much as I'd like to see the court have some more coming in, so that it's better for everyone in the city as a whole, I can't, I don't have control over that, unfortunately. And then finally, later on in the meeting is Resolution Number Four, and it has to do with the, the fines regarding the city court, or, excuse me, regarding violations filed in the court. If you read through the code, it, numerous times, it says, "A penalty for X code will be between $10 and $1,000." That's kind of a wide berth that the, that the city council has afforded the, the court, but, and I appreciate that the council has faith in the court, and that we could adjudicate that appropriately. But that really hasn't been looked at in four or five years. When the court opened, the administration and the former judge and the city attorney came up with a amount, $39.50, and it's that 50 cents, because it rounds off the 50 cents of court cost to a flat fee. They came up with that five years ago. I don't know what their rationale was behind that. I'm not saying it's good or bad that it's that amount. So I talked to Councilman Davidson, and I said, "I'd like a little more direction from the council on where they would like to see the, the fines at." Because I don't, you know, I'm not going to give someone a speeding ticket, I'm not going to give them a $1,000 fine, but a $10 fine's probably not enough either, and I don't know the rationale behind 39.50. So he asked me what the other excluded cities do, what, you know, Hamilton County, Johnson County, Indianapolis, what they all do. And I said, I told him that Lawrence, Speedway are $75. Southport is in the process of amending theirs to make it $75. It's 50 right now. It's 85 north of, north and south of Marion County. So I said, "That's a better window, I think, than the huge, wide $1,000 to $10." Now, of course, if you have a habitual individual, or you have speeding in a school zone, or you have more major violations, some of the building code violations and rental code violations and things like that, you probably need a heftier fine. But, so that resolution is to help, and Anthony put it together, and I, he showed it to me, and I thought, this looks pretty good, and it, and it gives more of a direction towards that $75 window, and plus, it also gives the leeway, if for some reason, there's an, a case that, that's unique and requires more of a fine, or less of a fine, it still gives me that leeway. And I felt that that was pro, a better direction for me. Now, it's ultimately up to you guys, but the 10 to 1,000 made me a little uncomfortable. I hope you can appreciate that, so. Any more questions?
Just a comment. Judge Wells, I appreciate the fact that you just itemized everything, so we can give, so we can get some direction on how things are going, and if it is profitable to the city, and it certainly appears that it is. So I appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Thanks.
Which just brings my, me to my question, because you said that Mr. Bell had asked us to bring the court into the black. I thought that we had determined that the court's paying for itself.
Well, the, the court fluctuates. It, it, and I don't know what, and I hate to, I don't want to speak for him, but I don't know what he was referencing exactly. Last year, I think the court was maybe 1,000 or two in the red. For 2011, again, I wasn't judged there, so I don't have 100% on those numbers now. 2012, I, and Dan can correct me if I'm wrong, but 2012, I want to say we spent about 95% of our budget, you know, and it was about $110,000, $111,000 in our line items. And again, the budgeting for the court is going to be different in the future, because it was the city attorney and the court together, and that's now separated out, so now you'll get a better idea. But if you look at this, you know, you had eight, about $83,000, and a little over $100,000 spent, $83,000 brought in, so you're, you're looking about, last year, a two, a $20,000 difference would have been in the red. But again, another thing we can't do is, I can't put a number on overtime save from officers not having to sit at Court 13 for four hours, and things like that, that we, that they don't have to do when we're here. And, and I don't know if you, if you would have a good number on that, or if you can, I don't know if that's something you can quantify, but...
I don't know. Mark has a better idea, but it, alls I'll say is, your budget, when I talked to you about it, you was one of the first ones that was willing to cut your budget, and there isn't much there to cut. I think we cut 1,500 out of it, but you take $110,000 budget, that's still a chunk of it, but...
Yeah.
I, I would just like to say, I think you operate your budget very well, and you watch every penny you spend.
Thank you.
I appreciate you.
I try, and, and as Dan said, there's not a lot of wiggle room there, but we try to keep it as, as, as short as, or as small as we can. So I would hope next year, we're closer to that, Mark, and I think with the new cities and, and once every, all the entities that use our court are used to the new system and everything's comfortable, I think we'll see more filings and, because that's, that's the determination. The number of cases filed will determine the amount of revenue the court generates. So I could have the best operating court in the world, and if I only got a case a month, it's always going to be in the red. But if I have 500 cases a month, it'll always be in the black. So that's what it comes down to.
Well, I didn't mean to imply that. I appreciate the court, and I...
Oh, no, I didn't, I didn't think you'd imply that.
It's a benefit to us, and, but it's not a bonanza, like, we're going to make a bunch of money on it.
Uh, no, it's, I don't think it'll ever be a bonanza, but again, you know, if, and then the one thing, the number of cases we hear is, is very low as to what we could hear. I mean, we have the capacity to grow and expand well beyond the amount of cases we hear. Right now, we, you can see, we get about 200, 250 cases filed, and that's, granted, that's without Speedway yet, 200, 250 cases a month. I would argue, we could do upwards to 2,000 a month, and you wouldn't really need to change much of what we do functionally, because some, the new computer system controls so much of it in such an efficient manner, that it doesn't require a lot more manpower. So a bonanza, no, but a nice new stream of revenue for the city, it could be. But again, that's not up to, to me. I can't prioritize who's filing what, and how many tickets are being filed, and what cases are being brought, so. All right? Thank you.
Thanks, Andy. Move on to public comments. Two people signed up to speak. First one, Pam Stalard. Pam?
Pam Stalard, I live at 7-Eleven, churchman. I've got a couple of points that I remain confused about, and maybe if I present them to the council, you guys can straighten me out on these things. The first one, I've sat through the other two meetings this evening about the trash totes. Those trash totes have been out in the public for several years now. What makes it an emergency right now? What is, what makes it an emergency? What's an emergency trash tote, tote problem?
At the last meeting, we said we were going to do it within 30 days.
Uh-huh.
Get it done. The council passed an ordinance last year for the inventory of totes.
Okay.
Right. We should, we could have done it as soon as they approved the ordinance, but we can't continue to keep it, pushing it off to the side.
Okay.
We're going to do it, 30 days is, is, let's get it done. We could extend it 45 days, 60 days, sure. But we've got to continue to...
So this was a done deal...
Yes.
...a long time ago?
Yes.
Okay.
But if the council is going to approve the ordinance, then we should attempt to, to do what they desire, and that is to get an inventory of totes.
Okay. Well, I wasn't sure why it was such an emergency at this point in time.
But as, as far as emergency, it needs to be done tomorrow, no, Pam.
Okay.
No.
All right. The other question I have, and I'm really confused about how our government works on this one. Seems like there have been a couple of situations lately, that the vote was not presented to our city council. City council was avoided, and the vote went directly to the Board of Works. Now, why, why is that? I thought everything had to be presented to city council. That's not accurate.
Give me an example, please. Let me, or I can think of one, like...
Well, this recent thing about this Weasel, or Wessel, or whatever, that went directly to Board of Works, didn't it?
That's an opinion.
Oh, okay.
The board is, the, the board, the council sets policy, and the council approves budgets. The board enters into agreements. I think that's the best I can put it. So it's proper for those to go in front of the board. Bids are approved by the Board of Works and Safety.
Okay, so...
Bids are approved by the council.
All right, so the council doesn't need to know anything about that kind of stuff?
Well, sure, I think they, they should be informed, but the Board of Works would be the one who, they're the governing board, they enter into agreements.
Okay.
The council funds the agreements.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you very much.
You want me to confuse you some more?
Oh, no, you've, you've done a good job on me already.
It's good, hey, Pam, it's good to see you.
Thanks, Pam.
Thank you.
Uh, there's one more person signed up to speak. Jim Kaufman. Jim, please step up and identify yourself, and where you live at.
Evening, Jim Kaufman, 148 North Fifth Avenue, 620 Main Street as well. Just wanted to first thank the mayor and the council for Main Street. It's been long in the coming, and long in the works, and I'm very excited to see, you know, all the action that started already. They already, already got all kinds of concrete ripped up, and it's exciting to see, and I think it's going to be great for the city, great for the businesses in Beech Grove, and just great overall. Second one, to thank the citizens in the surrounding areas, in Beech Grove and the surrounding areas, for coming to support local Beech Grove businesses. It's going to be tough in the next year, but I think it'll be well worth the pain. When Main Street is done and complete, it's going to be great, I think, and I encourage anybody, if you have any questions about any businesses, call them, ask them if there's access out front, if you can park out front, if there's a back door or anything, you know, just, please call them, and they'd be more willing to help you or answer your questions, so that's all I have to say. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
No one has signed up to, no one else has signed up to speak. Committee reports, Greenscape Committee, Dave. It's nice to see you.
Good evening, everyone. Dave Miller with the Greenscape Commission, I'm taking over for Tim tonight. Actually, there's, he wanted me to report, we really don't have a lot to report. On Saturday, April the 20th, is the city cleanup day, and I know he said that, I believe, generally in the last few years, Main Street's been cleaned up, but with the construction on Main Street, I think they're... construction on Main Street, I think they're going to spread out a little bit. And also, after the initial cleanup, I believe mid-morning, then we're going to go to the parks to do some cleanup there. But he said he would have more information at next month's meeting. Okay? The other thing that we've been getting calls about, several calls, is I guess you've seen in the paper where the city of Indianapolis is removing, in the neighborhood of 500 ash trees, up in the northeast part of Marion County around Fall Creek and Sergeant Roads, which is kind of tough because it's going to leap right into the state park there. But they're infected with Emerald Ash Bore. And I've had several questions from residents about the ash trees in Beach Grove. And in our 2009 tree inventory, which we inventoried all of the street and park trees, we had 43 ash trees at that time. I believe one or two has been removed since that time, but I'm not 100% on that. But we are going to inspect 41 to 43 trees that remain on public property, probably in May. And I just wanted to, you know, bring that to everyone's attention, that we are aware of what's going on. So far, this part of the county actually has not had any reports yet, but we want to keep up on it. So, and our next meeting will be March 18th, 6 o'clock at the community center. Anyone have any questions?
Yeah, Dave, for the residents that possibly might have ash trees, are there any identifiers to look at?
Actually, the identifier, and there's several websites, and on the city website and the Greenscape Commission website, there is an Emerald Ash Bore Alert. And just, you can click on that, and it gives you all that information. Basically, what you want to look at if you do have an ash tree, and you notice the very top of the crown having discolored leaves or no leaves, something like that, that's going to be your first indication. The other indication is a very, very small D-shaped hole that would be in the bark and the trunk of the tree. And unfortunately, once you spot either one of those, it's too late. So, you know, like we said several years ago, don't be fooled by someone that tells you they can, you know, do something for that tree because it's gone. The only thing you can do is, is an absolutely perfectly healthy ash tree can be treated professionally. It's expensive, and, you know, how do you know it's 100% healthy? You don't. That's, you know, as an arborist, that's what I need to tell you. You know, you spend your money how you want to, but, you know, don't be fooled. They've caught people out there simply spraying water on people's trees, you know, charging them several hundred dollars. So, you know, everybody's out there to make a dollar, so you just, you need to be careful. Any other questions?
Do you have a tentative time and place to gather for April 20?
Not yet. I believe it'll be like last time, John, probably around, I don't know, 7:00 or 8:00 o'clock for the street cleanup, and then maybe 10:00 or 10:30.
I was just hoping to announce it twice at the end of this meeting and next meeting, but we'll get the information correct.
All right. And he just didn't have all the details yet.
It's early.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
The RDC did not meet in February. I don't know why, but they did not. So, there's no report from those folks. Public Safety Committee.
Mayor, council members, the Public Safety Committee met on the 27th of February. One of our questions was commercial vehicles, the ordinance. We had suggestions. I've given them to Councilman Davidson to assist with that. It's also been brought up and let you know that abandoned vehicles, stranded vehicles, whatever you want to call them, the police department is pushing that for this spring. Our three shifts have been assigned, different areas. If you know of an abandoned vehicle, or you think you might have one, email me or call me, and we'll get it checked.
At what address? Email you at what address?
The city address, mark.swarz@beachgrove.com.
It's for...
Okay. And my understanding is that there, Dan has a new member. It's Debbie Springer as a city employee. She is also on our Public Safety Committee, and she says she's going to continue with the Public Safety Committee, and also she does Crime Stoppers. We appreciate that. And I was informed that on May 11th, there's going to be a 5K walk from the city park, Sarah Bolton Park, back to the park, able to start about 9:00 AM in the morning. And at this time, I'm still, as far as the police department would, doing a study on where the walking needs to be done, as far as crossing what roads, and what the police department will need to do to block off certain areas. And Julie Lockwood is, she gave me the information, and I'll get back with her as far as that. And I was informed today that there is a disaster exercise that's going to happen at the Beach Grove School during their spring break. It's going to be March 28th, from 7:00 to approximately 3:30 in the afternoon. And I was informed by Mark Parker, who's the officer there at the school, that this will have about 100 actors and about 100 workers. And this is based on a disaster where it's not a tornado, or it could be a chemical reaction or something of that. But the school, at my understanding, has supplies, and this exercise will show how those supplies are issued out, and victims or residents are treated. So, and this is happening during the spring break of the school. I think that's the reason they've picked this date. Any questions on it, I would suggest contacting the school, because I just found out about it this morning. Our next meeting for the Public Safety will be on the 27th at 9:00 AM here at the city hall.
Is there a tentative date on that walk?
It is May 11th. And Julie said that it will probably start around 7:30 as far as gathering in the city park, and then they're going to try to walk at 9:00. But we're trying to, I'm going around looking what might be the safest and what officers we might need or volunteers to make the crossing as safe as possible.
I'm sure you'll bring us that information so we can publicize it.
Yes, I will.
So, everybody knows. Thank you.
Chief, I do have a question regarding abandoned vehicles versus vehicles that are not plated. Is there a fine line between two, as far as being in people's driveways, where they just sit and...
In our opinion, though, it's, they fall within our same ordinance that we investigate it. And we can, we talk to the residents, tag it, and then the officers are assigned, are advised to talk to the residents and find out what the problem is, and tell them what they need to do to resolve the issue.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other questions for the chief?
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
I talked to Jim Brooks this morning. Jim's our rep on the ABC. Jim could not be here this evening, but he wanted to pass on to the council that the beverage license for Rick Skirvin was approved today. So, Rick is going to open up a restaurant here in Beach Grove. So, that was finalized today. The last report is financial, and I'll defer to the clerk.
Okay. Each of the council people, I left you a little bit of financial information as to what's going on, the bank account balances and so forth. But there is one thing that I need to do. I need your permission to transfer $2,500 from the city court bailiff to the city court education and longevity. What happened was, when the council approved the education pay for another year, this was not budgeted for the court. And in order for them not to go into the red this next payroll, I need you guys to approve this.
Motion to approve?
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda is the mayor's liaison report. Gary?
Thank you, Mayor Buckley, and council members. Good to see you again.
Good evening, Gary.
All right. Well, we've had several things tonight. You've got a certified arborist here. For anything on the city of Indianapolis property right of way, like along your streets, we will give you a free floor permit to work on that tree, but it's got to be signed off by an arborist. So, he's your guy. All right. I went to the master transportation planning today at Indigo. That was interesting because it goes all over the place, multi-counties, the whole bit. If you're interested in that, Indigo's doing that, and they're going to be revising it within the next month. So, if anybody's interested, talk to Indigo. South County Line, we'll be widening two intersections down there. They're already starting to remove trees. So, if you are going down that way anytime, you say, "What's going on?" Well, we're widening a couple of intersections. Railroad Road, which is in the Hill Valley area, and then Morgantown Road. State of the City Address is coming up Friday, 1:00 PM at the City Way Hotel, right downtown. Tomorrow night, this is Monday, Wednesday night, 6:00 to 8:00 PM is a transportation, excuse me, it's a trailways planning meeting for Perry Township. If any of you are interested, it's at the Perry Meridian High School and the library. The following day is the same meeting in Franklin Township, at their closed middle school west on South Franklin. So, if you're interested, 6:00 to 8:00 PM, at 6:30 is the presentation. Now, there's several other things going on. Ann Graham Lottz, Billy Graham's daughter, is coming to the convention center, and that's one month from now, April 5th and 6th. It's billed as a ladies' event, so if any of the ladies are interested in attending, and it's a free event. And then Billy Graham himself, this is his last event, his last crusade. He will be 95 in November. He said, "This is it for me." There's a big push going on for in-home meetings. So, these are packets for in-home things. For example, there's a CD in here to present to your church if you're interested. So, there's things like that. And the whole point of this is to have meetings in houses where you will have the presentation videoed, 30-minute presentation, 3-minute testimony, and then ask for a decision. There are other things going on. You're talking about community emergency response. You're talking about, what if we had a chemical disaster here? One of the trains spilled. Well, this is the Christian Emergency Network, but they also have a community emergency response team, of which we train regularly. If any of you are interested, this is, we know what's going to happen when the police and the fire get here. What happens until they get here? If it's a large-scale disaster, that can be a long time. That was the joke that's going around, you know, when you need help in seconds, they'll be here in minutes. So, seriously, what do you do when there's somebody walking around that's hurt, they're dazed, there's somebody down on the ground bleeding, there's other people around? What do you do first? I mean, a lot of the nurses know, this is the triage procedure. Then the police know their emergency incident command procedure, and so do the fire people. But we don't know it. So, this is to train us for that time until the police and the fire arrive. All right. And that's it. Any questions, sir? Thank you.
Thanks, Gary, very much.
Thank you.
That concludes the reports. Start under old business. The council, you have an appointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals. So, at this time, I'll open the floor up for nominations.
I have a nomination of Al Thompson. And I'll get the contact info to the rest of the councilors after the meeting.
Any other nominations from the council? Make a motion to close the nominations?
I'll make said motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, to close the nominations, signify by saying aye. And we will take a voice vote on Al Thompson, starting to my far right.
I have no idea who the person is. I can't vote on somebody I don't know anything about.
This meeting, didn't Ed bill nominee Joe Hag?
Can we get an opportunity, he's going to get contact information with all, anybody that'd like to contact him, have a month, and we can put him in on the April 1st meeting?
That'd be great, because I think I do remember Ed saying that he had somebody to make sure who it was.
That's who it was. And so, I just wanted to make sure that he was not excluded when I thought Ed made that motion.
Who was it, Dan?
Joe Hag.
Oh, that's, he did, that's right.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. So, what I'll have to do is I'll have to table that, and I'll ask for motion to table it until the next meeting.
I'll make said motion to table this until next meeting.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We will table it until the April meeting.
Just for clarification purposes, should I include Joe Hag's name in there since he was nominated at the last meeting?
Yes, I would be glad to nominate him, yes. I nominate Joe Hag. Thank you, Anthony.
We'll take that up at the April council meeting. General Ordinance Number 2, 2013, is up for second reading this evening. I'll defer to Councilor Davidson for, read the ordinance.
Thank you, mayor. General Ordinance Number 2, 2013, is an ordinance amending Section 72.23 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Beach Grove, Indiana. Whereas citizens of Beach Grove are often given a company vehicle to use for their employment, and whereas some residents do not have parking in their alley and need to store their vehicles overnight, and whereas parking areas are set up for residents on some streets, and whereas Section 72.23 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Beach Grove, Indiana, the Code of Ordinances must be amended to provide for the matters set forth therein. Now therefore, be it ordained by the common council of the city of Beach Grove, Indiana, that Section 72.23 of the Code of Ordinances be amended, and hereafter, read as follows. A, no owner or operator of any semi-truck or person in charge of the same shall park it or permit the vehicle to be parked or standing upon any street or alley between midnight and 6:00 AM for a period of more than one hour. Now therefore, be it ordained by the common council, finds it just to amend Chapter 72, Section 72.23 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Beach Grove, Indiana. Be it further ordained that all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith are hereby repealed. Be it further ordained that this ordinance shall go into effect immediately after passage by the common council, signed by the council president, tested by the clerk of treasure, and signed by the mayor. And before we go any further, I have an amendment that I got from Chief Schwartz on.
Okay, go proceed.
I'd like to amend this to read the entire, the entirety, to read, "Commercial vehicles weighing more than 26,001 pounds or more," or, yeah, weighing more than 26,001 pounds shall not park within the residential or business district on public thoroughfares of this city, except for the purpose of loading, unloading, or performing work."
Motion to amend?
I accept the, I motion, we accept the amendment as read?
Second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Question?
Yes. I don't know. How big is a 26,000-pound truck? I mean, what kind of trucks are we talking about?
If you want to clarify. If you want to clarify.
Are we talking about vans, work vans, or box trucks?
What we're trying to cover is maybe a duly, that's owned personally by a person, that would cover that. Most commercial vehicles weigh more than that. So we're trying to get, my suggestion is that we cover personal vehicles that weigh, might be heavier, but also anything over 26,000 would be covered by a commercial vehicle that registered as a commercial vehicle or that are labeled as that. And I think the ordinance probably should cover that if they say they're a commercial vehicle, they are a commercial vehicle.
So my question is like, a person that's a construction guy or a painter, and he's got a van with ladders all over it, or stuff like that, is that prohibited then from being parked at his house? If that?
I'm not sure if the letters or the name is covered, but the weight, if it's a van, a one-ton van or less, it would not fit within a commercial vehicle. But if it's labeled as a company vehicle, I think that ought to be covered, or if it's registered as a company vehicle, it should be covered.
A 26,000-pound vehicle, generally a flatbed truck, a very large box truck, we're not talking about anybody that works from their home that has ladders on their vehicle. We're talking a small semi, a box truck, or a, figure a 26-foot flatbed is a, is a more of a wrecker-type vehicle that can pick up another vehicle, put it on top, and move on. We're not talking about anybody's private vehicles. We don't want anybody to park a company vehicle, and that's identified by a tag on their license plate.
Okay, and I agree with that. I just want to be clear that I understand what I'm approving.
Any other comments? Motion to approve General Ordinance Number 2, 2013, with the amendment included, on second reading.
I'll make said motion as amended.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We will hear this at the April 1st meeting on third reading. General Ordinance Number 3, 2013, is up for second reading this evening. I'll defer to Counselor Davidson, please.
Thank you, Mayor. General Ordinance Number 3, 2013, is an ordinance adding Section 96.10 to Chapter 96 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Beech Grove, Indiana. Whereas citizens set out waste on public city property for collection from the sanitation department, and whereas often people go through waste when placed on public property, causing waste to scatter all over roads and alleys. And whereas thieves use the cover of picking trash to avoid suspicion. And whereas permits set in place would help identify pickers. And whereas the common council has determined that waste collection should be, should only be handled by the property owner, the waste comes from the sanitation department and permit holders. Now therefore, be it ordained by the common council of the City of Beech Grove, Indiana, that Chapter 96 Garbage and Refuge Collection is hereby amended by the addition thereto of new Section 96.10, and read as follows. It shall be unlawful for a person to take waste from a dumpster container or bag when the container has been placed on public city-owned property without a permit other than the property owner and the Beech Grove Department of Sanitation. Waste may only be picked up from dusk till dawn. Permits obtained through City Hall must include a government-issued identification number and are good for a period of one year at a cost of $5. A violation of this section shall be subject to a fine not less than $50. Now therefore, be it ordained that the ordinance only applies to the removal of trash listed above. Now therefore, be it ordained that this ordinance goes into effect 30 days after approval of the common council, signed by the council president, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
If I can give a brief statement here. What this is, is we got people going through our trash or going up and down the alleys, claiming to be going through the trash when they're scoping out your garage. So this way, we can identify them. If they don't have the $5 permit, they're going to be chased off or ticketed. We're not trying to reinvent the wheel here. We're just trying to give the police department a way to stop people from going up and down the alley. This way, we can identify them. If they're there on ill means, we can shoo them off. We now have a, so we're not trying to prevent you from putting your trash out at a certain time. We're just trying to give everybody a good overlay as to what's expected of the people that are driving up and down our street. We don't want to stop them from taking the dishwasher from in front of my house. We don't want them doing it 2:00 in the morning from my garage. So just a brief overlay of what that was, because there was some question.
Thanks, sir.
You've heard the ordinance on second reading. Motion to approve as read.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We will hear this on third reading at the April 1st meeting. That concludes Old Business, New Business, Resolution Number 4, 2013, Violation Fees for City Court. I'll defer to Counselor Davidson.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution Number 4, 2013, is a resolution that adopts a fee schedule for violations of the Beech Grove City Code of Ordinances that are filed in the Beech Grove City Court. Whereas the common council of the City of Beech Grove, Indiana, has codified certain ordinances comprising the Beech Grove City Code of Ordinances, and whereas the Beech Grove, the City of Beech Grove, through its executive branch, enforces the Beech Grove Code of Ordinances, and whereas the City of Beech Grove, through its city attorney, files alleged violations of the Beech Grove City Code of Ordinances in the City of Beech Grove Court. Whereas the Beech Grove Code of, the Beech Grove City Code of Ordinances sets forth a very wide range for the assessment of penalties for violations of its codes. Now therefore, be it resolved that the common council sees it just to adopt a fee schedule that further clarifies the application of fines for violations of the city code. Now therefore, be it further resolved that the common council of the City of Beech Grove sets forth the following fee schedule, City of Beech Grove Fine Schedule. Charge: All moving violations, fine $75. Cost: $116.50. Total: $191.50. All other violations, fine $40. Cost: $116.50. Total: $156.50. A. Unless otherwise determined by the city judge in accordance with Ordinance 70.99 and 71.99, B. Or as otherwise provided by Indiana Code. Now therefore, be it resolved that the common council has found it just to adopt a fee schedule that further clarifies the application of fines for violations of city code. Now therefore, be it further resolved that all sections of the Beech Grove City Code of Ordinances addressing penalties for code violations are still in effect. Now therefore, be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately after passage of the common council, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Floor is open for comments or questions. Sure.
If the state of Indiana changes their fee, the $116.50, do they increase it? Does that cut into our $75 or $40, or does that?
Now, if you look at their cost, B., what I put on there, "Or as otherwise provided by Indiana Code", so that fee can fluctuate.
Right, so ours is 75 will stay the same.
No, of that $116.50, we see $1,950 of that cost.
Right, I get that, but, but the person that's paying it, are they going to pay, they'll pay the higher amount because Indiana's charging more, correct?
I'm having trouble following.
Yes, if the state of Indiana increases their number, the person paying the tickets' number will be higher.
And so then our 75 will stay intact?
Correct.
Any other comments or questions from the council members? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 4, 2013.
I'll make said motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Do you have a signature sheet for approval? General Ordinance Number 4, 2013, Greenscape Commission, is up for hearing on first reading only. At this time, I'll ask Dave Miller from our commission to come up and give us a brief overview of, of what the intent is of the Greenscape Commission.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, what this is doing, this General Ordinance Number 4, would be combining Resolution Number 5, 2004, which was the establishment of the Greenscape Commission, Special Ordinance Number 8, 2005, which was the Tree and Flora Ordinance for the City of Beech Grove, and Special Ordinance Number 2, 2008, which was the term limits of the members. And to combine those three into one general ordinance that would comply with the city code. There's no, absolutely no change in wording of any of the three other than how they may fit together as one.
This is not an addition, this is instead of?
Yes.
Instead of number 5, number 8, number 2?
Right, right. And what, what that will do, it will create, within the code, the city code of ordinance, it will create in, within Chapter 35, a Section 35.2, which will be, I believe, that's for the Greenscape Commission itself, and then Section 105, Chapter 105, Section 105, would be for the ordinance, the tree ordinance. And I have, I don't know, I, does everyone have a copy of that? You know what we're, okay. There's one correction I need to make, or that needs to be made. It's on page 6, number 105.11, under the licenses and permits. Number A, in the fourth line there, that begins annually in advance, everyone to that point? Okay, annually in advance, payable to the city, shall be, and it says food, okay? It says, that should be good for 12 months, all right? That's actually the only error that I found in it. There may be some others, but I did find that one. So that needs to be cleared up there. So is there any questions? That's, that's the basics of this.
What we could do is, if the council desires, we can approve this on first reading and then amend it at the next meeting.
Amend the letter?
Yeah, the food, or good. Unless you wanted to go ahead and do it now.
I'm not worried about that misspelling. I think everybody knows the. Can we accept this on title only?
Yes, I was going to mention that. We can do this by title only because it's longer than two pages, single-lined.
Do you have anything else you'd like to add?
No. Not if anyone has any other questions. That's, we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
General Ordinance Number 4, 2013, is up for first reading, and I'll ask the council to waive the rules and read by title only. Need a motion?
I'll make said motion to read by title only.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
General Ordinance Number 4, 2013, is an ordinance providing for the operation of the Beech Grove Greenscape Commission and the preservation and maintenance of tree and flora species for the city of Beech Grove, Indiana. Go ahead.
I motion we accept General Ordinance Number 4, 2013, with the F changed to a G on page 6, as written.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We will carry this to the April 1st meeting for second reading only. General Ordinance Number 5, 2013, is up for first reading. I'll defer to the clerk to read the ordinance.
General Ordinance Number 5, 2013. General Ordinance Number 5, 2013, is an ordinance that amends Chapter 70 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beech Grove as it pertains to general provisions concerning Main Street from 13th Avenue to Emerson Avenue and the side streets to the alleys north and south from Main Street. Whereas Main Street is scheduled to be completely redone by November of 2013, and whereas infrastructure improvements will be completed to enhance the decor of Main Street, and whereas curved sidewalk streets, plant and tree boxes, along with street signs and lighting, will all have been replaced, and whereas this project will be the focal point of our city for years to come, so presentation is of utmost importance. Therefore, be it ordained that the common council desires to amend Chapter 70 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beech Grove that will prohibit any type of sign markings, signs, painting, disruption of the surface, streets, curbs, and sidewalks, or any other identifier be placed to, in, or on the area listed above. Therefore, be it further ordained that the common council desires that the following be amended as such. Section 70.35, displaying unauthorized signs. Replace subsection H, read as follows. A. Painting of any kind is prohibited on any street, sidewalk, curb, streetlight, plant box, tree box, or any other permanent landmark associated with this project. Number 2. Permanent or temporary signs shall not be affixed to any plant box, tree box, electrical fixture, street light, or any permanent structure in this designated area. Number 3. Penetration of the street, sidewalk, curb, plant box, tree box for the permanent or temporary stabilization of any structure or sign is prohibited. Therefore, be it ordained that the common council of the City of Beech Grove desires that the amendment to Chapter 70 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beech Grove be approved and enforced for the betterment of the city. Therefore, be it further ordained that this ordinance only applies to the above-referenced chapter of the Code of Ordinances. Therefore, be it further ordained that this ordinance shall go into effect immediately after passage by the common council, signed by the council president, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Floor is open for comments or questions.
I have a comment. The, I'm not exactly sure if this is the right, I don't agree, or I agree with the, the ordinance, but I don't agree with the placement of it. Currently, it's, we're replacing 70.35, which is, Chapter 70 is really about traffic code and, like, highway-type area. So I'm not exactly sure if this is the right place for it. So what I would like to do is, I'd like to make it a, a motion to table this until our next council meeting, because I don't, I think that this needs to be moved to another area.
Do you want to take a look at, or add any ordinances?
Yeah. I'm thinking it should be in like the, I don't, I don't want to say it right now, but it's, I'm thinking it should be in, in what the, the sign area of the building code. But I can't say the number.
We can do one of two things. We can go ahead and table it, or we can go ahead and approve it on first reading and amend it at second reading in April.
Which would you prefer? So you want to table, or you want to pass?
I would just like to table it.
I motion we table General Ordinance Number 5, 2013, till we find a better place for it. And I agree with Anthony. When you go through and you look at if this is going to amend Chapter 70, Chapter 70 mentions highway, and that's not our, that's not ours. So it should be in a different area.
You second Anthony's?
I'm seconding Anthony's.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign.
Aye.
I, I have a comment. I would, I agree. I mean, I understand the intent. But I would like for there to be some mode of exception there somewhere, for Fall Festival, for an example. What if somebody puts a sign on a light post for the, I mean, do you see what I'm saying? I mean, there has to be some logic to it. I mean, I know we don't want to deface our new, I understand that completely. But it seems like this is just like real cut and dried, never to be, I don't know. I just kind of am wishy-washy on that. Sorry. I, I.
What you could do is, when it comes up again, you can amend it. What you could do is, when it comes up again, you can amend it, ask for amendment to it.
So that people could ask for special permission for a certain sign for a special event or something?
Yeah, if we're going to table it for a month, you've got a month to write up an amendment for it.
Oh, I'm, I'm great at that, you can tell. Okay, thank you, John.
General Ordinance Number Six, Two Thousand and Thirteen, is up for first reading. General Ordinance Number Six, Two Thousand and Thirteen, is an ordinance that amends Article Fifteen of the City of Beech Grove, Indiana Personnel Manual Concerning Employees' Driver's License. I'll defer to the clerk to read the ordinance.
General Ordinance Number Six, Twenty-Thirteen, is an ordinance that amends Article Fifteen of the City of Beech Grove, Indiana Personnel Manual Concerning Employees' Driver's Licenses. Whereas, some employees are required to drive vehicles and operate equipment that is owned and maintained by the City of Beech Grove, and whereas the City of Beech Grove may not have knowledge of an employee's current status as it pertains to his or her driver's license, and whereas a employee's employment may be based upon his or her ability to drive or operate machinery, and whereas the City of Beech Grove may assume a risk should an employee be driving a vehicle or a machine, or machinery on an expired or suspended driver's license. Therefore, be it ordained by the common council of the City of Beech Grove, Indiana, that it desires to amend Article Fifteen of the City of Beech Grove's Personnel Manual pursuant to driver's licenses. Therefore, be it further ordained by the common council of the City of Beech Grove, Indiana, that the following section be added to Article Fifteen of the City of Beech Grove, Indiana Personnel Manual. Section E, Driver's License Checks. One. Any employee who may have, have cause to drive vehicles owned and operated by the City of Beech Grove shall be subjected to random driver's license checks. Two. Employees who have a change in their driver's license status shall immediately report the change to their respective department head. Three. The police chief or his or her designee shall conduct a random driver's license checks. Therefore, be it ordained that the common council finds it just to amend Article Fifteen of the City of Beech Grove's Personnel Manual. Be it further ordained that all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith are hereby repealed. Be it further ordained that this ordinance shall take effect immediately upon passage by the common council, signed by the council president, and attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Floor is open for comments.
If I had a comment, it would be that, why would it be random? I mean, they must have proof of a valid driver's license, and able to, you know, to drive a city vehicle. And that's a senior.
The randomness is that I might, that the chief might walk up and say, "I need to see your license," and you have to present it.
So, I mean, it's not like you're going to, I mean, because in my job, when you have to have a file, and it has to have your current driver's license, your current car insurance, your current, everything, and you have to update it every time it changes, if it changes. So, I mean, it just seems to me common sense. I mean, I get that, I get the randomness that way, but does this not mean then that, like, what if we hired somebody, we don't know him or her, and they're driving, and then six months later, his boss says, "Can I check your driver's license?" Is that what this is, or would they?
He's going to check at the time that he hires them?
They would be, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
And then any point after that?
And then.
If they hear a rumor that they've lost their license?
Right, yeah.
They'll have to prove that they haven't.
Yeah, exactly. That's the only comment.
I motion we accept General Ordinance Number Six, Two Thousand and Thirteen, on first reading.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We will hear this on second reading, the April First meeting. General Ordinance Number Seven, Two Thousand and Thirteen, is up for first reading. General Ordinance Seven, Number Seven, Two Thousand and Thirteen, is an ordinance that amends Article One, Employee Classification, of the City of Beech Grove, Indiana Personnel Manual. I'll defer to clerk to read the ordinance.
General Ordinance Number Seven, Twenty-Thirteen, is an ordinance that amends Article One, Employee Classification, of the City of Beech Grove, Indiana Personnel Manual. Whereas, from time to time, the City of Beech Grove has employment opportunities for citizens, and whereas citizens often fill out applications for an employment opportunity, and whereas the City of Beech Grove makes decisions on who should be given employment opportunity, both full and part-time, and whereas the City of Beech Grove desires to employ good and decent people who will reflect positively on the community. Therefore, be it ordained that the common council of the City of Beech Grove, Indiana, desires to amend Article One, Employee Classification, of the City of Beech Grove, Indiana Personnel Manual. Be it further ordained that the common council of the City of Beech Grove desires to amend Article One, the City of Beech Grove's Indiana Personnel Manual, to read as follows. Add subsection one, Drug Testing. Number One. All applicants who the City of Beech Grove desires to employ shall be given a random drug test by a lab authorized by the City of Beech Grove. Number Two. Results of the testing shall be delivered to the clerk treasurer for filing in the applicant's application file. Number Three. The applicant shall be notified of the test results only if the applicant failed by the respective department head of the department they were being assigned to. Number Four. Failure of a drug test shall immediately disqualify the applicant from employment. This also disqualifies the individual from applying for any other position within the City of Beech Grove for a period of two years from the date of the application well submitted. Now, therefore, be it ordained that the common council of the City of Beech Grove desires that Article One of the Personnel Manual for the City of Beech Grove be amended. Therefore, be it further ordained that this general ordinance only applies to Article One of the City of Beech Grove, Indiana Personnel Manual. Therefore, be it further ordained that this general ordinance goes into effect immediately upon approval by the common council, signed by the council president, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Floor is open for comment.
I'd like to add a section five, and I'm, I'm just, it doesn't say anything about a random drug testing. It says, "All applicants who apply for a job will be given a random drug test." That's not random, that's a, you're going to have to pass a drug test. We need to have a spot in here where it says something along the lines of, "All employees are subject to random drug testing without warning." Somebody wrecks one of the Beech Grove trucks, they might need to go in and take a test.
You want to put it on this one, or you want us to do a separate ordinance?
Is this specifically for new hire? Okay, then I'll, I'll bring one up for them, for a random drug test.
Because we could do one at the next meeting for that, John.
Okay.
I agree.
I pull my motion amendment.
Go ahead, Anthony.
I would like to make an amendment to this, that the aye there doesn't make sense, and John brought it up too, where it says, you know, random drug test, all applicants. And also, "All applicants to the City of Beech Grove shall be given a, a, a drug test." I don't think all of them, I think all will be subject to a, a drug test, so I would like to amend that, to read, "All applicants who the City of Beech Grove desires to employ shall be, shall be subject to a drug test by a lab authorized by the City of Beech Grove." It can get pretty pricey if we, if we start drug testing all of them.
Because that would include us also. And if you, if you'd really like to test me, that's fine, but I don't think we need to waste the money on testing Dan.
I think that, "All applicants who the City of Beech Grove desires to employ." That means they've picked who they want to hire.
And not voted on?
Yeah.
Ah.
No.
But I, I agree with the, the changing it from subject to subject from given, shall be subject to a, yeah.
So is this a pre-employment screen for everybody?
Yes, yes. The police and fire already do it as conditions of perf.
Okay.
But we, the other people that the city might hire should be subject to testing.
Absolutely, yeah. Absolutely. I agree, I agree.
I agree with the council here, but it gets to the point where you're not going to test everybody, you're only going to test who you desire to hire.
Right.
He has a motion on the floor to amend.
I'll, I'll second that motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. General Ordinance Number Seven, Two Thousand and Thirteen, is up for vote on first reading with the amendment.
I will, I will approve General Ordinance Number Seven as amended.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We will carry that over to the meeting in April. And John, we'll have a ordinance for current employees at the next one also.
Thank you.
Last order of business is General Ordinance Number Eight, Two Thousand and Thirteen. Holiday schedule, first reading only.
Can this be read by title only?
Uh, yes. And also, you should have copies of the two conflicting, you should have a copy of the current Code, uh, Code of Ordinance and the Personnel Manual to compare.
Dan, are you familiar with this?
Yes.
Can you give us an overlay, please?
Well, what was actually happening here is, we had two conflicting dates as to when was a holiday. Myself, I was recognizing, recognizing national holidays, where others didn't think that was the case. So I just wanted clarification on how you want me to pay the employees of the city, and that's basically what I'm asking for here. And something that's not in here that I would like to see, or I've overlooked it, if that's the case, and that is the opportunity for them to trade holidays, which has been done in the past, let's say, if they don't want off on Columbus Day, and would rather have the day after Thanksgiving, or Christmas Eve, whatever, I would like there be a little bit of leeway there for that to happen.
If we pass this on first reading, can you have that amendment force on second reading?
This is, council, for your information, this was brought forward by Councilor Bell, who's obviously not with us this evening, and if you want to do it on first reading, that's fine, and he can explain it in April when he is back in session.
My, my objection to this is, Good Friday, that's not a legal holiday. Veterans Day, I'm a veteran, and I never got paid for that. And then the day after Thanksgiving on Friday, that's not a legal holiday. Why are we paying these people for that? Doesn't that cost us twenty-five thousand dollars each and every holiday?
I don't know if it costs us twenty-five thousand.
Yeah. That would be a good ballpark number.
The Veterans Day, Dave, is a national holiday.
I never got off work, I never got a paid day for that day, and I am a veteran.
That's according to who you work for. I mean, I, I worked at Chrysler, I got these off and more.
A Good Friday?
Yes, sir.
A Good Friday's not a holiday. The day after Thanksgiving's not a holiday.
It's in the agreement. I'm not saying everybody gets it, but I'm just saying we did.
If I can add to that, I looked up City of Indianapolis, City of Lawrence, Greenwood, and one other city who has spaced my mind right at this particular moment. All the holidays listed are the ones that they all get, it's the same ones, including the State of Indiana, I believe.
I, I disagree.
Dave, I said.
I know people that work for the City of Indianapolis, and they don't get these days.
I think these are, if, if, if you work for the government, I think you get these days off.
Why don't we check into it and see?
Well, I think Anthony did.
For the State of Indiana.
I did.
And they're getting paid for it.
The City, the City of Indianapolis, it's, it's pretty cut and clear, you can go, actually, you can just Google, like, do like I do, I, I use Google, I don't know if that offends anybody. You can just Google Indianapolis, um, city holidays, and it leads you right to it, and lists every holiday that's given. And I, I'm in the same boat, though. I work, you know, I work in healthcare, and I don't get veterans' day off, and I'm, I'm proud to be a veteran.
Right, I am too.
But, you know, that's just the, the nature of, of who I, who I'm employed by.
They don't get paid.
How do you know?
They do not get them.
When I checked Greenwood's schedule, they got the ten national holidays, is what they got. And our employees here are getting additional two, uh, two days, personal days, on top of the days that are listed also.
General Ordinance Number Eight, Two Thousand and Thirteen, is up for first reading, and I'd ask a motion to waive the rules to read by title only, since it's two pages and longer, single-spaced.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye to read it by title only.
Aye.
General Ordinance Number Eight, Two Thousand and Thirteen, is an ordinance that amends Chapter Thirty-Seven, Section Thirty-Seven Point Zero-Four of the Code of Ordinances, and Article Seven of the City of Beech Grove Personnel Manual pursuant to recognize holidays for employees of the City of Beech Grove. Any other comment from council members? If not, a motion to approve on first reading only.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. It passes five to one. We'll hear it on second reading at the April First meeting. That concludes new business. Council comments, starting to my far right. Dave?
No comment, thank you.
John?
Uh, Beech Grove Boys Basketball Season is over. They went two rounds into the sectionals, had an excellent game against, no, it was an ugly game against Indian Creek, and we did win, and we played very well against Danville, and got beat up pretty good. They beat us by twenty, it was a wonderful season, the kids had fun, even the kids that didn't play very much had a good time. They should be commended, and we have another season, pick one, volleyball, basketball, baseball, whatever's coming up next, support your local kids, because one day they'll be taking care of you.
You betcha.
That's all I have, thank you.
Dave? Uh, thanks for everybody for coming and staying so long. That's it.
Anthony?
Um, I would just like to say, at the February Eight-Nineteenth Board of Sanitation Meeting, a request from the DPW Director came forward to count trash totes in the city and create tracking system. The agreement that the board agreed to was for sixteen thousand to Westler Engineering. There was no bid process for this, the city had been approached by volunteers to do this free of charge. Because the, the amount was over ten thousand, it must be sent to bid according to Thirty-Five One Eight-One of the, of the Beech Grove City Code, which was adopted last year by the council and signed by the mayor. The Board of Sanitation is comprised of Mayor Buckley, Councilman Bell, and Sandra Seward. Upon notification on what the board had done, I quickly wrote a letter to the board addressing that their decision was a violation of city code, and asked that the taxpayers not foot the bill for their mistake. Mayor Buckley had pulled the agreement, oh, I just learned, and the Board of Sanitation approved a new agreement of ninety-seven hundred to only count the totes and not to develop an inventory system. Volunteers were able to count, however, the money will be spent. After looking at the finance, the financing of the city, I'm concerned about the spending habits in the city. With that said, I would also like to add too, that I'm sure most people will know it, that has, that have kids in the Beech Grove school system, but spring break is two weeks this year, so the kids will be out a lot more. That's it.
No comment this evening, sir?
Anthony?
I'm just, I'm going to say thank you for the monthly meetings, and doing the first, second, and third reading, giving me personally the time to digest all, when we were moving fast, it was, I, this, I liked this, I really feel like I'm learning more about what I'm, I mean, it's giving me time to get input and make more informed decisions, and I really appreciate the change in format. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Our next meeting is going to be April the first, Two Thousand and Thirteen, seven P.M., at Hornet Park Community Center. And that is going to be done because I think they're going to be closing A Street here at Main Street on April first. That's subject to change. We might be meeting here if they don't do that, and I will give you adequate early warning. But I think they're going to close Main Street here at A Street on the other side of A. We have a little concern about the restaurant here, and how much it can affect them if we close it down entirely, so I'm not sure what they're going to do yet.
How will you notify the public as to where the meeting will be? Where should they check to come and see us meet?
We'll put a notice on the website or on the front board somewhere. Council, you have a appointment to the merit board for the Fire Department that is up in May. So I'll put it on the agenda in April to remind you. Don Smith currently serves as your representative. I'm not sure whether Don wants to continue or not, I'm not sure, but that is up. So with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. So with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second that.
We will be adjourned at eight twenty-nine P.M.